Good evening and welcome to the Lampokee City Council meeting, Tuesday, March 3, 2015. May we have roll call please?
Councilmember Mosby?
Here.
Councilmember Vega?
Present.
Councilmember Homdahl?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle?
Here. We will have oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak on any subject for the next three minutes. Seeing no one rise, we will close our communication and we will recess to closed session. We have one item in closed session, it is a conference with labor negotiations. We will see you in thirty minutes.
Okay, we are going to reconvene our Lompoc City Council meeting of March 3rd, 2015. Reports of action taken in closed session, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item that was discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. And will you please stand for the invocation by Pastor Bernie Fetterman?
Almighty God, I'm honored to call upon you publicly this night, knowing full well of our reasoning to trust in your power, your grace, and your mercy. I pray knowing full well that you hear us when we call upon you, and you lead us and guide us and provide wisdom as we ask. I pray for our mayor, Lingel, our councilmember, Starbuck, Mosby, Amdal, Vega, as well as our city administrator, Mr. Wy Miller, our attorney, Mr. Panoni, and all who lead our city. Give them the ability to listen, to reason together, and to gain wisdom from one another, so that they may make the best decisions for our city today, as well as for its future. We ask you to guide them specifically with the items before them tonight, and the many decisions that are facing them in regards to our city's budget, and that you would bless and guide each person who speaks before this council. Humbly, we acknowledge that we could not think a thought without your guidance, inspiration, or accomplish anything of lasting value without your strength and courage. So we seek your gifts of wisdom, discernment, and vision to maximize the talents that you have given these leaders, and those who lead the various departments of our city. And we ask for your power and your courage, as we press forward with opportunities that you place in front of us, for continued favor in the area of our economy, and favor for those who seek gainful employment. And watch over those who protect us and keep us safe, and handle situations and circumstances we may never read about or fully understand. Be with those who serve in various health fields, mental health, emotional and physical health, and the many faith-based groups, nonprofits, and individuals who continually add value to our town. I give you all glory and honor and praise. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have a presentation this evening by Pornemawag.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Pornemawag, and I represent Better Touch Government Financial. And today, the presentation is going to be on the utilities, and I'm specifically covering the collections and accounts receivables part of the utilities. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of the three key components of the utilities revenue audit that I'm doing presently. The first part is the collections, and this includes the voluntary closed service, accounts closed for non-payment and delinquencies. Also, it is examining the entire collections process from start to finish, to see how much revenue the city is collecting from delinquent accounts being sent to outside collections agency. The second portion is operations, everything from when the customer signs up for service to the customer being identified in the billing system, and identifying and rectifying loss of revenue through streamlining operations and finding efficiencies. The third part is the billing, which is all the account information on the customer, including notes and changes in the account, fixing code discrepancies within individual accounts, address discrepancies, billing discrepancies, which is also leading to revenue loss, including loss in productivity and efficiency. Today, I'm going to just cover the collections portion. The operations and billings will be covered in another presentation. I'm going to briefly go through the collections process. So the city of Lompoc has contracted out the utility portion of collections and other miscellaneous collections with an outside collections agency or credit bureau since 1991. The city does a 60/40 split with the agency on all utility account collections, and a 50/50 split on everything else, which could include invoices, booking fees, court judgments, and transfers to another agency for collections. The collections process in a little bit of detail here. So as far as the city of Lompoc collections process on our side in utility billing, the delinquent accounts are looked at carefully five times a year by two staff in utility billing. The identified accounts are sent a closing letter. So these are the delinquent accounts. Once they're identified, they're sent a closing letter, and the customer is given 30 days to pay. If the customer does not pay within 30 days, then they're sent to the credit bureau. Their account is sent to the credit bureau under what is called letter service status. So this is pre-collections. The letter service costs the city of Lompoc $3.50 per account that we send to the credit bureau. This is for every delinquent account. As far as the credit bureau collections process is concerned, the credit bureau sends out two letters and gives the customer 30 days to pay. And the entire process from when the account is closed to the final collections, it takes approximately 90 days. So this is when the city of Lompoc deals with it, to all the way to collections, the collections bureau dealing with it, takes approximately 90 days. These are some of the letter service statistics. This is pre, letter service again is the pre-collection status. In 2011, we sent out 782 accounts for letter service, and we paid $350 per account, which comes up to $2,737. In 2012, we sent out 679 accounts. Multiply that by $3.50 per account, it's $2,376.50. For 2013, we had 998 accounts, and that total was 3,493. And in 2014, we had 585 accounts, and that was $2,047.50. The total paid to the credit bureau for just the letter service status from 2011 through 2014 was $10,654, which is fairly substantial. We don't have information for years prior to 2011, so I have not put that on the slide. Going into letter service statistics into further detail, in 2013, we had 998 accounts that owed $156,517.94 in total, and only 29 accounts paid in full, which amounts to $3,549.99. The other miscellaneous payments amounted to $5,025. And when I mean by miscellaneous payments, it is payments, canceled accounts, or partial payments, and any other kind of arrangement that might have been made. So those accounted to $5,025.21. If I do the math here, if we do the math, the dollar amount recovered by the city is approximately $8,575. When you add $3,000 and $5,000 as a percentage of $156,000, it's only 5.47%. So it's a very small percentage of how much we've really recovered in letter service, in just letter service. For 2013, unfortunately, we only had half the statistics available, because we didn't save more than six months of data after it was sent to collection. So we have only partial data for 2013. For 2014, we had 585 accounts that owed $199,587. And only 45 accounts paid in full, and that amount was $5,249. And then the miscellaneous payments amounted to $8,029. Again, these miscellaneous payments are canceled payments, or canceled account, or they made arrangements to pay the amount, or partial payments, etc. And again, the dollar amount recovered there, if you add the $5,000 and $8,000 as a percentage of the $199, it comes to $13,278, which is approximately 6.65%. So again, it's a fairly low recovery rate. I'm going to go into more detail here regarding the credit bureau collection statistics that were sent to us by the collections bureau themselves. And they actually sent numbers all the way from 1991, when they started doing the collections process for us, all the way through 2014. But because we have very little time here, I'm just going to go into the highlights of what I think is very important. If you look at 1994, 95, all the way through 2000, you can see a trend on the total accounts that were sent, anywhere between 797 to 1,100 accounts. The total number of dollars that were sent is anywhere between 140 to 180,000. But what is very important here to see is the percentage recovery, meaning how much the collections agency recovered out of those dollars that we sent them. And as you can see, it holds fairly steady between 41 to 45%, which is what we should be expecting from the collections agency. So at the bottom there, I've mentioned what the trend is. In the 1990s, we sent a lower amount of dollars to collections. However, the recovery rate was fairly high, at between 41 to 45%. After 2008, all the way through 2014, we see a fairly alarming trend here. We're sending the same amount of accounts, anywhere between 900 to 1,100 accounts, to collections. However, the total dollar amount we're sending ranges from 240 to 450,000. So that's a pretty substantial increase in the number of dollars that we're sending to the credit bureau for collections. But what's more alarming is the recovery rate on what the credit bureau is giving us, as far as recovering money for us on our behalf. And in 2008, it was 33.66%. And then from then on down, there's a steady decline. It's 32.84 in 2009. 2010, it was 28.82. And then it goes down to 25.77 in 2012. 2013 is 25.68. And then we suddenly have a major dip. It's a 7% decline to 18.66% in 2014, which is fairly major, in my opinion. So again, since 2008, we've had a higher amount sent for collections. But the recovery rate, again, has been declining between 25% to 34%, but dramatically dipped down to 18.66% in 2014.
If I can clarify before we leave this slide. I'm more alarmed with the general trend where we were in the mid-40s, and now we're 30 and below. For the record, I'm not as alarmed about this most recent dip, because these accounts need to mature. In other words, we're freshly out of 2014, and sometimes, regardless of what year you're in...
And accounts receivables part of the utilities. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of the three key components of the utilities revenue audit that I'm doing presently. The first part is the collections, and this includes the voluntary closed service, accounts closed for non-payment and delinquencies. Also, it is examining the entire collections process from start to finish to see how much revenue the city is collecting from delinquent accounts being sent to outside collections agency. The second portion is operations, everything from when the customer signs up for service to the customer being identified in the billing system, and identifying and rectifying loss of revenue through streamlining operations and finding efficiencies. The third part is the billing, which is all the account information on the customer, including notes and changes in the account, fixing code discrepancies within individual accounts, address discrepancies, billing discrepancies, which is also leading to revenue loss, including loss in productivity and efficiency. Today, I'm going to just cover the collections portion. The operations and billings will be covered in another presentation. I'm going to briefly go through the collections process. So the city of Lompoc has contracted out the utility portion of collections and other miscellaneous collections with an outside collections agency or credit bureau since 1991. The city does a 60/40 split with the agency on all utility account collections and a 50/50 split on everything else, which could include invoices, booking fees, court judgments, and transfers to another agency for collections. The collections process in a little bit of detail here. So as far as the city of Lompoc collections process on our side in utility billing, the delinquent accounts are looked at carefully five times a year by two staff in utility billing. The identified accounts are sent a closing letter. So these are the delinquent accounts. Once they're identified, they're sent a closing letter, and the customer is given 30 days to pay. If the customer does not pay within 30 days, then they're sent to the credit bureau, their account is sent to the credit bureau under what is called letter service status. So this is pre-collections. The letter service costs the city of Lompoc $3.50 per account that we send to the credit bureau. This is for every delinquent account. As far as the credit bureau collections process is concerned, the credit bureau sends out two letters and gives the customer 30 days to pay. And the entire process from when the account is closed to the final collections, it takes approximately 90 days. So this is when the city of Lompoc deals with it, to all the way to collections, the collections bureau dealing with it, takes approximately 90 days. These are some of the letter service statistics. This is pre, letter service again is the pre-collection status. In 2011, we sent out 782 accounts for letter service, and we paid $350 per account, which comes up to $2,737. In 2012, we sent out 679 accounts, multiply that by $3.50 per account, is $2,376.50. For 2013, we had 998 accounts, and that total was 3,493. And in 2014, we had 585 accounts, and that was $2,047.50. The total paid to the credit bureau for just the letter service status from 2011 through 2014 was $10,654, which is fairly substantial. We don't have information for years prior to 2011, so I have not, you know, put that on the slide. Going into letter service statistics into further detail, in 2013, we had 998 accounts that owed $156,517.94 in total, and only 29 accounts paid in full, which amounts to The other miscellaneous payments amounted to $5,025. And when I mean by miscellaneous payments, it is payments, you know, canceled accounts or partial account, you know, partial payments, and any other kind of arrangement that might have been made. So those accounted to $5,025.21. If I do the math here, if we do the math, the dollar amount recovered by the city is approximately $8,575. When you add $3,000 and $5,000 as a percentage of $156,000, it's only 5.47 percent. So it's a very small percentage of how much we've really recovered in letter serviced, in just letter service. For 2013, unfortunately, we only had half the statistics available because we didn't save more than six months of data after it was sent to collection. So I have, we have only partial data for 2013. For 2014, we had 585 accounts that owed $199,587, and only 45 accounts paid in full, and that amount was $5,249. And then the miscellaneous payments amounted to $8,029. Again, these miscellaneous payments are canceled payments, or canceled account, or they made arrangements to pay the amount or partial payments, et cetera. And again, the dollar amount recovered there, if you add the $5,000 and $8,000 as a percentage of the $199, it comes to $13,278, which is approximately 6.65 percent. So again, it's a fairly low recovery rate. I'm going to go into more detail here regarding the credit bureau collection statistics that were sent to us by the collections bureau themselves. And they actually sent numbers all the way from 1991, when they started doing the collections process for us, all the way through 2014. But because we have very little time here, I'm just going to go into the highlights of what I think is very important. If you look at 1994, '95, all the way through 2000, you can see a trend on the total accounts that were sent, anywhere between 797 to 1,100 accounts. The total number of dollars that were sent is anywhere between $140,000 to $180,000. But what is very important here to see is the percentage recovery, meaning how much the collections agency recovered out of those dollars that we sent them. And as you can see, it holds fairly steady between 41% to 45%, which is what we should be expecting from the collections agency. So at the bottom there, I've mentioned what the trend is. In the 1990s, we sent a lower amount of dollars to collections. However, the recovery rate was fairly high, at between 41% to 45%. After 2008, all the way through 2014, we see a fairly alarming trend here. We're sending the same amount of accounts, anywhere between 900 to 1,100 accounts, to collections. However, the total dollar amount we're sending ranges from $240,000 to $450,000. So that's a pretty substantial increase in the number of dollars that we're sending to the credit bureau for collections. But what's more alarming is the recovery rate on what the credit bureau is giving us as far as recovering money for us on our behalf. And in 2008, it was 33.66 percent. And then from then on down, there's a steady decline. It's 32.84 in 2009. 2010, it was 28.82. And then it goes down to 25.77 in 2012. 2013 is 25.68. And then we suddenly have a major dip. It's a 7 percent decline to 18.66 percent in 2014, which is fairly major, in my opinion. So again, since 2008, we've had a higher amount sent for collections, but the recovery rate, again, has been declining between 25% to 34%, but dramatically dipped down to 18.66 percent in 2014.
If I can clarify before we leave this slide. I'm not, I'm more alarmed with the general trend where we were in the mid-40s and now we're 30 and below. I'm, for the record, I'm not as alarmed about this most recent dip because these accounts need to mature. In other words, we're freshly out of 2014, and sometimes, regardless of what year you're in, we only collect, you know, we collect a certain amount for the present year, some for the last year, less and less the farther back you go, but sometimes we recover in arrears. So we don't, we don't recover all of the 2014 money in 2014. We will recover some of it in 2015, 2016. So I just want to give that clarification. I still am concerned with the overall trend, but not quite with that precipitous drop right at the end. Thanks.
And then I'm just going to go into a little bit of detail about the statistics that I just presented. So 1994 through 2005, we saw smaller dollars that we sent for collections, so between $135,000 to $180,000. And with the number of accounts we were sending, it was between 900 to 1,000. But then the recovery rate, again, as Patrick pointed out, was between 40% to 45%. So it was fairly high. Now, from 2008 to 2014 and beyond, we've seen larger amounts of dollars, so between $300,000 to $400,000 being sent to collections. The number of accounts, again, are fairly steady, 900 to 1,000, just like they were between 1994 and 2005. But the percentage recovery rate has been rapidly going down, and, you know, to about 25% and then the 18.66 in 2014. The third point here, I would like to clarify that where I've said that, according to staff in utility billing as a percentage, solid waste accounts, accounts for about 85% of the utility, which is split, 45% of the utility split percentage sent to collections. And I would like to clarify that point. And what that really is, is that the 85% is the number of customers who receive solid waste services as a percentage of all customers. So it's, I didn't try to be misleading here or anything, but it's important to remember that it's the number of customers, it's 85%, is the number of customers who receive solid waste services as a percentage. So that is what the percentage is, is that 85% of all the customers within the city. So I thought I'd clarify that. As far as my recommendations are concerned, I think it's very important, considering the money that we are not recovering from collections and the money we are losing in collections, that I think that the collections process on our side should be a monthly, it should be done on a monthly basis, as opposed to just five times a year, to get a better idea of how much is being recovered in terms of dollars. Because I think five times a year is just a little too little. The second point is that the credit bureau should be requested to send in detailed recovery statistics every month, or at least every three months, to monitor their revenue recovery progress. Because we've never really received anything from the credit bureau as to the statistics that I just mentioned. This is the first time we actually got something from them. The third point is that although 18% was quoted by the credit bureau as a national average for non-medical-related collections, you know, the 18% that I mentioned in 2014, I, as a justification for recouping the 18.66% in 2014, I think that we, the city of Lompoc, needs to reevaluate their contract with the credit bureau in terms of expecting higher revenue in dollars and recovery rates, because I think 18%, in my opinion, is just way too low. Needs to be somewhere on 40% to 45%. And going forward, I can, I'm going to continue looking at the operations and the billing aspects of the utilities, starting with solid waste, because that's the next portion of what I need to be looking at as far as utilities is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Portman. Do we, does anyone have any question? Councilmember Starbuck.
Very enlightening. I'm just going to kind of mention that a few years ago, I'd questioned the accounts receivable and was told $150,000. And I'm looking at this, and I can see over $2 million just in a period here. I guess my question would be, don't we get deposits when we, people sign up for utilities? What happens to the deposit? Doesn't that go in to pay for their bill? You know, just a question. The other would be, possibly, we've got something going on here where people are just leaving. Wouldn't it be better maybe if we were to receive the deposit from a landlord where somebody would actually pay? We get out of the credit collection business and quit losing on the 60/40 split, and gives the ability to place a lien or something. And once again, it appears as though because of our computer, we're very limited on the information we can pull here. We've lost half of 2013, it says. We've got people manually doing this twice a year, and is that a true statement that the computer upgrade would go ahead and enhance our ability to better this system?
I think there's a couple of people would like to start answering, either Brad or yes.
I'll take the lead, and I'm sure Mr. Wilkie can round out for me. Three good points there. First of all, on the deposit, we need, we'll be bringing forward, we need to have a policy call about the adequacy of the deposits. They really are rather modest in term, when compared to the exposure we have in collecting, in other words, how much we're asking on a deposit versus the exposure will take to go through the process if somebody stops paying to the time we shut off services. But that's always in balance, because you create some financial hardships as well if you make your deposits too onerous. So there's a balance to be struck there, but I think it can probably stand for us to enhance those deposits. Part and parcel with this is, we have a program that's being developed where we've discovered that some of the housing dollars that help low-income housing can also be used to, you know, that like gets people into housing, can also be used to make deposits on utility accounts. And so that may be the balancing mechanism we use to be able to enhance our deposits without being too onerous on people that otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it. In terms of your issue about the property owner, I agree with you as well. I'm used to dealing with a system that, in terms of where you've got one property owner, but, but the, the customer, the utility customer is like someone who rents property onsite, that the, the rent, the lesser and lessy decide amongst themselves who's going to be the utility, the direct utility customer, who's going to get billed and the like. They work that out in their rental arrangement. But assuming for the moment that the renter is the one who has the, the account, that it's still the property owner ultimately who's responsible on that account, so that somehow we're not able to recover from the non-owner occupant, who's the customer, then we go after the, the property owner, and we have the ability to lien the property in that case if we can't recover that way. That does, we have to, something like that needs to be, you know, have, have plenty of healthy discourse, particularly with the stakeholders, you know, property owners and the like, would be impacted by that. But ultimately, that's one of the few effective ways we can protect against these sorts of losses. We need to be able to have, you know, some of that, those obligations run with the property rather than with the individual, who is not recoverable property generally is. Finally, on your point about the computer systems, definitely, I mean, we can, we can do some adequate financial tracking and, and the like, but ultimately, part of a new computer system is going to provide some very robust information, not only with the dollars of utility accounts, but also with utility uses. I mean, ultimately, it's, our interactive process for an individual who has a utility account, to be able to interact via the website, I, as a customer, I should be able to do more than just merely, now we've just taken the step to be able to pay online, but I should be able to, to be able to retrieve my account history, my usages, and any amount of information that, not only that the city can look at, but that I, as an individual customer, can look at. So those are, those three areas are very much areas that have our attention. I don't know, Brad, do you want to add to that?
Thank you. Trying to remember some of the things that were asked. The, there was one item that was talked about, the reduction in the collection amounts from the mid-'90s to the mid-2000s. One thing to keep in mind is that this is collections for all activity, not just utility bills, but also our miscellaneous bills. About 10 years ago, we started billing for people to utilize our jail at $130 apiece. The collection success with that is very low, so there's a substantial amount that has to be written off on those accounts. We issue bills for people that are, don't have addresses, may not be around at all. The ability to collect on those is pretty small, but they are still sent, they're still billed, they're still sent to collections. So that, I think, was probably part of the reason why it's gone down from the mid-'40s to the mid-'20s.
I want to say something. This is just for utilities.
Just utilities?
Yeah.
Speak into the microphone.
Portman, just, just let me know that the figures she has are just for utilities. But my statement about the total amount is still true, that the amount that's going through for miscellaneous is low because of the amounts for jail, people going to jail. The, the other question about the utilities, that I'd like to expand a little bit on Mr. Wyomiller's statement, was that the two resolutions for water and wastewater, for a number of years, and I don't know when it started, actually has in there, the resolutions that adopt the rates for customers, have statements in there that these will not be applicable to, or prohibited from collecting from landlords. So somewhere along the line that that got put into place. So for us to be able to eliminate that, we'd have to go through a Prop. 218 process for water and wastewater to allow for that to be started. So it would still require a lot of discourse with, and communications with everybody involved, but that is another step in the process that we'd have to take if we decide to go down that road to place a lien on a property-based utility if the payment isn't made by the, by the tenant. The discussion about the utility rates, the utility deposits, there's, as you know, there's currently a revision in going through the utility commission to revise our collection and billing policy. That policy created a little bit of comments about the request to abide by state law, which allows for three months of an average bill to be collected as a deposit. So we're, right now, we're just collecting on an apartment $50, and on a single-family home, $75. So to your point, we're not even collecting the amount that is equal to one month's a bill, because the typical bill for a customer is about $160 for an apartment and about $200 for a residential home. So though, said another way, if we were collecting three months' deposit on all of our utilities, there would be hardly anything on these slides, because we would have enough money to cover all the customers from the time that they stop paying until we shut them off.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, for Portman, could you put the, the slide showing 2008 to 2014 back up? My rough estimates, the total from '08 to '14 is about $2.3 million. And our total recovery, granted, that didn't include the recovery percentage that the collection agency got, but we, we got about $400,000 out of this $2.3 million. And this is a significant number. I mean, granted, as a percentage of the whole, and I've heard it tried to be talked down. And this is one of my questions that I brought back a while ago. I'm not opposed to these three months or either the landlords, but we, this is what I've been looking for, so we can show why we have to make as drastic a steps that we're looking at doing, going from $50 to $75 security deposits, and, and for the public to see what kind of numbers we're sitting there. In your other agencies, other places we've worked, have you seen numbers like this that people aren't collecting? Is this kind of a?
Not this high. I mean, I've worked for other cities, and we have, I, at least I haven't, I worked for the municipality of Anchorage, and city of Malibu, and even for Santa Barbara, and from, at least from my perspective, from what I've seen there, I don't, I haven't seen numbers this high.
And do you, are there other ideas that you might have for getting this? I mean, increasing security deposits, or like we're talking of going through the 218 process and getting it so we could attach onto real property? I mean, is there, is there another? I think security deposits are way too low, or what do you, what do you think?
Well, I think, I mean, if we're getting between, if we're getting, if we're getting 25, 25% maybe now, if we're going to collect more than 18% and it just keeps going down, which I see a general trend where it is going down, I mean, for the last seven years, we might as well, and if the collections agency is justifying it by saying it's a national average of 18%, we're better off just taking it in-house, and doing this in-house, and spending less money on collections.
Maybe there's a better way so we don't become a collection agency. That's what, that's what I would like to see, if we had, we collected upfront in the form of a three-month security deposit, or we collected it where, like I've mentioned in the past, my properties, like some of my properties I have up north, the, the bills are in my name, they send it to the tenant, the tenant doesn't pay, I get a note to say, hey, your tenant's not paying. I have a large enough security deposit. If they don't, then I collect it out of, I become the collection agency. It looks like the city of Lompoc is spending a lot of time, you know, chasing some money, and we're not getting what we need. I mean, you know, the, the $1.9 million we missed in these seven years, I'm sure there's a lot of places we could spend that money. There's, you know, granted, it has to stay in the enterprise funds and this and that, but in being on the utility commission, I know that there was a, there were a lot of places we could have put that money.
Right. And I think that that's what I'm trying to portray here, is that I think we're, we're just not collecting what we should be collecting, considering that we're paying this collections agency to do exactly that, which is collect. And they're just giving us these manly, pammy excuses, saying, oh, well, you know, you know, the economy is bad, or where we can't collect because of the economy. Well, then why are we paying you to do the collections? I mean, these people are supposed to be experts at collections.
Well, I think these are significant numbers, and so, you know, the public can see too that this is, you know, we've got to make some serious changes. We really definitely have to find a way to get these revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamdul.
Yeah, within this, I think I've heard some real good questions and some good comments on it. But what is the percentage in the commercial buildings? How are they handled and compared? Is this, this isn't all residential, this is including commercial and everything else?
Well, this is all the utilities, so it's not just solid waste. It's, I mean, because we have one bill that, you know, you, you have all the different accounts, you have solid waste, sewer, wastewater, et cetera. So I think it would be, I, I, maybe IT could sort of delineate what, how much the commercial people owe, but I really doubt it. I don't know if the credit bureau can actually give us just the, the commercial accounts. I mean, we can ask the credit bureau to give us just the commercial accounts, as opposed to all the accounts that they've given us, which is residential and commercial, I'm guessing. So, so I couldn't really answer for them. Maybe they can provide the commercial, the statistics on the commercial accounts, but it would have to come from the, the credit bureau.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it wouldn't be too bad an idea to look at that, but like I said, how much we get out of it. Commercial is also one of those, one of the larger ones, of using from electricity to everything else. So I mean, if they're not paying their bills, but that does go back, like Mr. Mosby said, right to the property owner. And so we want to make sure that's being covered.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah. Portman, as always, I find these presentations to be kind of interesting, a different perspective, so to speak, that we get here, and I appreciate that. Not directed at you now, but I want to say that the collection of three months, based upon what I just heard, $160 for an apartment and $200 for a home, on top of a first and last, that somebody is moving out of their house, or leaving home and going to get their first apartment, say it's a $1,000 rent, so they put $1,000 first, last, $1,000, and then the city's going to ask them for another $480 for a utility deposit, plus whatever else happens. A home, $600 deposit, seems excessive. It doesn't seem like that would be the correct way to go, but that's just an input and not at your presentation.
Thank you. Just one question, I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Wilkie can answer this, or maybe Portman, you can. The aging, before we turn the account over to an agency, or to the agency, 60 days, 90 days, 120 days, when do we turn it over?
Well, I, I, I think there's a certain limit, but I can find out. Well, I think there's a certain limit, but I can find out what it is. I mean, I think it's, maybe, I think that after 30 days, they're sent to letter service is what I believe, because when she checks to see who's delinquent and who hasn't paid, I can find out for sure from the staff in utility billing how old the account has to be before it's actually sent to collections.
Because 30 days seems awful early to be sending it to a collection agency.
Right, so I, I'm guessing it might be about 90 days, but I'm not 100% sure, so I, I don't want to guess. I want to give you the right answer.
So, please get that information. And then, the follow-up question that is, is that consistent? In other words, with the decline over the last six years, is that because now we're sending old accounts that are 120, 180 days out, as opposed to the newer accounts, maybe in their years? So, is there consistency with the aging in the two different graphics you gave us?
Well, I can find that out, too. I can find out what the aging is and how much we're sending.
Mr. Wyman?
Yeah, one of the observations, I want to, a couple of things on point. One of the things that, as we analyze that, that I'd like to look at is to see if we used to handle it more hands-on internally, and did at one point or another, as we got in tough economies, did we start, you know, did we eliminate a position or so that might have dealt with that internally? Because definitely, it seems like there, it may behoove us to dedicate someone to doing just that sort of activity, at least for some period of time, to see if we can improve those numbers. The other observation of this is that the company's, one of the collection agencies' defensive responses to, you know, basically, why aren't we doing better? I believe what they shared with Portimao was that, they said, well, our current collection rates are pretty consistent with the national average. So, and I appreciate that, at least that lets us know, well, we're not doing horribly. But, the flip side of that says, well, then, why are we paying an agency if all we're doing is doing what's the average? I'm assuming we're paying someone to do something extraordinary above just average, or otherwise we'd be handling it ourselves. If, you know, I just have a higher expectation when we are outsourcing services that we're going to get something more than the national average.
Councilmember Mosby?
Now, I know in the accounts receivable, we also do kind of in-house collection, where we set up payments programs. That wasn't represented there with the?
No, this is just the credit bureau part. I mean, this is, I mean, I haven't, I haven't touched anything.
So, there could be some more, there are some more numbers out there, because we have some people who are making payments on some, on some backs, so there's potentially...
Yes, sure.
I was going to answer Mayor Lingel's question first. His question was, how long does it take to get to collections? Is it 30 days? He said 30 days, that sounds like pretty, pretty short. We're not talking about the time it takes to shut somebody off, which is about 90 days. So, between the time that somebody decides to stop pay and us turning them off is about 90 days. The 30 days that we're talking about here is after the count is shut off, it goes to collections in about 30 days. So, this is after the process that we take to try to collect from them over that cycle, which is why it's important to consider a three-month deposit.
So, it's really 120 days?
From the time that they first stop payment, yeah. When they first decide to not pay us.
It's about 120 days, but only 90 days of that has financial exposure, because the 30 days is after we terminate service.
Yeah, they're already off by that time.
But, the account is, at that point, 120 days old?
120 days from the day, the last day of the billing cycle that services. So, even those people that pay their fastest, there's, you know, there's some delay from the time, the end of the billing cycle till they receive a bill, and then they have a period of weeks to be able to pay and still be on time.
And that timeframe is about 45 days, because it takes about 15 days to get the bill out, and then the customer has 30 days to pay. So, from the time, from the month that they actually receive services, at the very earliest, we probably expect payment is 45 days after that. So, and I'm sorry, I forgot your question.
Any other questions?
Oh, okay. The state law that I referenced that says we can do up to three months of deposits for three months of an average bill, state law also requires us, it doesn't, just, it's not just us saying, we'll give somebody an agreement. State law requires us, if somebody requests an agreement, to give them an agreement. That agreement, they have to abide by, is a contract between the city and the customer, that an agreement states that they, somebody falls behind on a bill for a month, they come in and say, I can't pay it, can I get 12 months to pay that? We have to give them that. But, the part of that agreement is that they also have to stay current on every single month during that 12-month timeframe. So, if they fail to stay current on any one of those months, or fails to pay on that agreement, we theoretically can shut them off based on that right there. So, the contract requires them to do that.
Do you have that number, that's in agreements?
I don't have it with me right now. I can get that from the utility billing department.
Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, Mr., this question's more for Mr. Wilkie here. Do we have any kind of relationships with the other utilities in the unincorporated areas of Lompoc at all? I mean, are they more on the, on their side of the fence, as far as Mission Hills, Vandenberg Village? I'm not an advocate of creating more hardships for more people. I'd be more of providing incentives. If there's a way of, do they have a collection method, or is anybody close enough to their utilities finding water? PG&E is also separate over there, where we, we provide our own electricity. But, Mission Hills, Community Services District, Vandenberg Village, are we aware of any kind of collection that they do? Because, you know, from my experience, it seems like you can move from Lompoc, or you can move back and forth and not pay your bill, but you, you get to go over there and kind of, you know, get your utilities turned on, okay? And I was just wondering if there's some sort of an effort that could be put in where everyone kind of gets, without letting someone turn on their water, if they owe somebody in the unincorporated areas, along with the city of Lompoc, unless I'm way out there where we don't have a relationship at all with these people.
Well, kind of your question goes towards another topic, which is the three-month deposit that we're suggesting in the new billing and collection policy. That's not the only way that somebody can provide good credit to the city. The proposed rules and regulations also allow for somebody to bring in their credit history from PG&E, which they would give somebody that, or from another agency that shows that they had good credit with another agency, and part of the new rules would allow us to take that as proof that they are, that have good credit, and we'd take that as good credit. We don't currently do that, in fact, I was, but that would be something we could do.
Yeah, because it just seems like you can go from Lompoc and go to Mission Hills, or go to Vandenberg Village, get your water turned on, but not pay Lompoc. So, the incentive would be, can we provide some sort of a relationship with them in our collection efforts to say, hey, you know, yes, that, that policy that you say is not implemented, we could do that, correct?
There are, there are rules for confidentiality rules, where they wouldn't be able to tell us what their customer's base is. Just like we can't go to Mr. Mosby and say, this is what your bill is. We can't do that here, and there are rules against that for us to, we would get in trouble if we did that. So, going out to an external agency like that would be that, would be a violation.
Our only tool would be to pull the credit report, and if, and we mark their credit with not paying a utility bill, that would be a...
Yeah, the main thing, the main tool that we have with somebody who's doing that is to get on their credit record, and it would affect their credit rating.
One more question. You know, along with the losses that we have stated up here, that Portimao had up here, are we not, do we not invest our funds in interest-bearing accounts also? I mean, the utility money that's being held, or are these just non-interest-bearing accounts? Is that also taken in, in consideration when you consider the losses?
The deposits that are held on behalf of customers do not earn interest. The money that the city hold, the, the pool of money that the city holds is in an investment pool, so we do earn interest on the cash that we have on hand.
Got you. So, the losses outside of the deposits are interest-bearing, which we also have lost on that also, correct?
Well, right now, interest rates are, our portfolio is about 0.5% right now earning.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, I was just asking. Right. Okay, anything else? Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, just real quick here, when I was looking at the collection statistics here, we have a 120-day period then, that we're claiming we haven't received payment, but in the math world here, it would appear that almost 926 accounts going into the $240,000, it would be that just about $235 are what you're saying per house per month. Is that a real average there? Did I do some, you know? We're 120 days, but we're only, you know, we're going after $235 and 926 people, roughly.
Well, if you, I really can't assume something, but if you take an apartment complex where the water and sewer is paid by the landlord, because it's a common pipe going to the house, they would only have electric and solid waste. And if you only have electric and solid waste, your bill's about $55 a month. So, $55 a month times three is about $150. So, on a typical house, if they're not paying for that, if somebody who's got electric, wastewater, and solid waste is about $100. So, on average, it's about 300 for three months. So, that's probably in the ballpark, because most of these are not large accounts. And when Councilmember Hamdahl asked about the collection process for commercials, I can't answer that specific question, but to your point, the laws that allow for three months of average deposits really apply to residential customers. But, right now, our, our collection policy that's in place since 1988 has a minimum $100 deposit for a commercial, but also equal, or one month's of average use. So, that would be an area where it'd be beneficial to us to make that, to protect the city's financial interest, even though it might be onerous on the customer, which Mr. Wyman Miller mentioned, that there's a program that's going to be brought to you in early April that would allow for assistance to customers for their utility deposit. So, for those who can't afford it, there, there will be a mechanism that would allow them to get that paid and allow them to move in without coming up with that $480.
Okay, thank you. Portimao, thank you very much, very enlightening.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to City Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two items I want to brief you on. First of all, if you'll recall, you had voted to form an ad hoc committee for the purpose of meeting with two members, two members from this council body, in this case, Mayor Lingel and Councilmember Starbuck, to meet with two members of the Board of Supervisors to discuss the Summit View Annexation, in particular, annexation issues in general, and land use planning and policy. It was our intent, I believe, your intent as a body, and the guidance the city attorney and I were giving you as to how to go about doing that, was with the idea, this was going to be a private, if you will, get-together to have those discussions, avoiding things that might trigger Brown Act necessity. The response we've gotten from the county is they indeed have appointed two members for the purpose of that committee, Supervisors Farr and Adam. However, apparently, is the wish of the board to have those meetings be public, and they'd like to post them, have an agenda, and go through the same sort of requirements as though it was a Brown Act-required process. So, I, I need to report back to the county as to what your pleasure is. We're in, right now, in a situation that if one side or the other doesn't change, we're in a bit of a standoff. So, I was just going to do a quick poll of the council, and particularly of the, of the two members of the ad hoc involved, to see whether or not you, you're okay with just having this as a public meeting with those two.
I'm fine with it. It's, it, you know, an ad hoc committee is, so just a couple of members can get together without any Brown Act, but if that's, if they want to have a full public meeting, I have no problem with that. I guess we just sort of don't have the ad hoc committee. We'll have a city, a joint meeting with the city council and the Board of Supervisors then. I have no problem with that, if that's the, if that's the way they want to do it.
I don't care, we go one-on-one, or we bring the whole body?
Well, I think maybe they were still planning on it being two-on-two, but would do it in a public setting. If you'd like me to suggest back entire body and entire body, I certainly can do that as well.
We're, we're fine with either way they want to do it.
Patrick, you know, if, if they're going to go two-on-two, you know, wouldn't it be to our benefit to add one more person on there? Why not?
You know, it seems like there's some hang-up on their end. We just want to get this done, so ask them how they want to do it, if they want the whole body to meet with the whole body, we can. If it's, if they want to meet two-to-two, a public meeting, we have no problem with that. Is that correct, Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Okay. Just as long as we can get it done.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll report back. The second item I wanted to discover tonight, that I wanted to discuss tonight, was to share correspondence I received from Mr. Don Ayers regarding Ayers Hotel Project. And unfortunately, the bottom line here is that Mr. Ayers is reporting that they have decided to not proceed with their hotel project, at least not at this time any further. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to receive, just to share a couple of excerpts from the letter I received from Mr. Ayers. He says, "It is with regret that I have decided not to take the Santa Rita Hills Hotel Project any further. Your team and staff helped me tremendously along the way, and I thank everyone for their efforts. Though there were still remain some possible complications and unknown, I do believe we had come to terms with many of the early obstacles in the due diligence process. With that being said, it was primarily a business decision based on market demand and the fact of two hotels coming into the market at the same time that made this project less viable for us, and wished us well in, in our future and our growth, and I regret to have to share that with you, but thought it was important to, to share nonetheless." That concludes anything I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hamdahl?
Yeah, I'm real pleased to have this in the record. Hate to see it happen, but what I want people in this city to know, that is the same thing Fest Parker said when he didn't finish his budget. The city did everything they could possibly do. I've heard so many lies over the last 10 years, that the city caused Fest Parker for not building the facility there at the same place. Ayers said the same thing. Our staff and everybody else worked very closely with him, and it was their decision, and we did everything we can. But, I, I'm getting tired of lies, and there was a lot of lies tied with the Fest Parker. We have a letter in, in-house from Fest Parker when that project was not done. So, I, that's, I'm real good to see this in, in the record, and I just hope people now realize that the city did everything it possibly could. We could help if we wanted to put up $10 million, but we don't have, we've got too many other projects. I mean, that was, it got to that point, and I think Mr. Ayers is good. I've met with him several times, very good. He liked the area, and his wife's father was at Vandenberg Air Force Base, so they had a lot of reasons to come here. So, I just want to make sure the public, the general public knows that is the facts of life and is not a lie to it.
Thank you, Mr. Hamdahl. Okay, we'll move to the first public comment. This is your opportunity to speak for three minutes on anything on the consent calendar. Come on up. We give you our consent.
Thank you. Mayor Lingel, council members, Ken Austin, Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, just a kind of a quick update on what's been going on at the chamber. In February, on the 10th, I attended the bimonthly Vandenberg Newcomers Briefing. I go to those and try and tell folks, the new folks at the base, about what's going on in our area, and encourage them to enjoy the area while they're here. On that same afternoon, we had a Workforce Investment Board Job Fair meeting at the Dewey Center. That's coming up on the 16th of April, so write that on your calendars, write that down for all the council members. 16th of April, 1 to 4, at the Dewey Center, the next job fair. That same evening, we had a mixer at the YMCA. That same evening, we had a mixer at the YMCA, always a nice event there. The next morning, on the, well, on the twelfth, we had our first meeting for our next shop, Long Po shop, small sip, Long Po meeting. So we're planning for that sometime in May, so we'll see how that goes. It'll, it'll be another good event, I think, so it's, but it's a lot of work putting all that together. That evening, we had a Military Affairs Committee meeting, and in the same, same evening after the Military Affairs, we had our Youth Leadership Long Po Valley meeting. So those committees are going very well at the chamber right now. On the sixteenth of February, I met with the school district, and we're planning a Community Literacy Day on the thirtieth of May, going to be a big event on a Saturday at El Camino School. Going to be, all the schools will participate, a lot of community support groups will be there, but it will be a very, very big event, so also put that on your calendars, thirtieth of, of May. On the seventeenth of February, the Tourism Investment District Board had a regular, not a regular meeting, but our meeting in, in planning for the Explorer Long Po kickoff that we, we held this last week. So we meet regularly with them. On that same evening, the Workforce Investment Board Youth Council Meeting, I attended in Buellton. On the eighteenth, we had our joint luncheon with Santa Maria, which, which, which we hosted the Air Force, Vandenberg Air Force Base Wing Commander, does his presentation this year. We changed that and had to move it to the Federal Crescent Complex Training Center because the base club was closed down. That's reopened now, but it was a good luncheon. We probably had close to two hundred people at that luncheon. And we thanked the, the, the warden at the prison for that because it was really a big help to have that there. On the nineteenth, we had the Flower Festival, or the Festival Association Mixer, where they kickoff and introduced the queen candidates for the year. I was there for a real brief time, because I had to get off to Buellton for the Vandenberg Annual Awards that were held in Buellton this year, because again, the club was still down, but they're, they're back up again. On the twentieth of February, we had our first meeting for Old Town Market, getting ready to start that off. Hopefully, we'll be starting on the tenth of July, going through the twenty-first of August. But again, we're just starting the planning process for that right now. On that same day, had the Federal Crescent Complex Annual, or their, excuse me, their Community Relations Committee meeting. They did a presentation on the history of the facility, which I thought was very interesting. I didn't realize this facility was built in nineteen forty-six. They started construction in nineteen forty-six, and I took my father-in-law with me, and he was there, one of the first employees ever worked there, and it was an army, an army facility. So that was kind of interesting, and they loved having someone with that kind of knowledge there to, to talk to about the facility. So that was a good day. On the twenty-third of February, I was able to get eleven inmates from the Federal Crescent Complex to go work at the BMX Bike Park and help, help get some of that stuff ready to go. So they're getting closer. We got about a good six hours worth of work out of the inmates that day, and they, they enjoyed being there, and I know that Dave and his group enjoyed having them there, and the amount of work they put into that facility. Excuse me. On the twenty-fourth, again, another Air Force Base Newcomers Briefing. Again, it's a twice-a-month deal. Usually, there's about thirty to fifty people, always a good opportunity to share about our area. And then, of course, on the twenty-fifth, we had the Explorer Long Po kickoff. I know many of you attended that. I think it's very exciting, one of the most exciting things going on in Long Po in a long, long time. We had our, our first meeting after our annual monthly meeting, and it's just, it's exciting. The group's excited. A lot of good stuff's going to come from that, and I think it's, it's a good thing for, for the Long Po Valley. On Monday, the second of March, I met with Leadership Breakfast, Teresa also attends that. We meet with a group of leaders in the community, talk about various topics. This week, we talked, or this month, we talked about volunteerism, and, and some of the issues with that, and why people volunteer, and why we're having a harder time finding volunteers, but it's just a good opportunity to share with some of the leaders in our community. And as I already mentioned, this morning, we had our, our regular monthly Tourism Investment District Board Meeting, and that's moving forward. So, any questions?
Any questions for Ken?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Okay. Continue with the public comment, or, yeah, public comment on the consent calendar. Anything on the consent calendar?
Pam Wall, local resident. I don't, I don't want to talk about consent. Can I talk about what? Thanks.
Okay.
Give me the high sign.
Okay, so, again, a reminder, this is your opportunity to speak on anything on the consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, and we will move to approve the consent calendar. This consent calendar will be made with one motion unless it is, there is an item pulled by a council member. Councilmember Mosby?
I'd like to pull item number five, just for some clarification.
Okay, item number five will be heard later. Anything else? Go ahead, Councilmember Starbuck.
I didn't want to pull an item, but I, I wanted to ask Mr. McCune, just a quick question about item four, which is the Safe Routes to School Sidewalk Infill Project. This says we're in our tenth cycle here. Is there a way that we can, say, skip one and keep money so we could maybe get into a bigger project than just sidewalks? I'm saying maybe like a lit crosswalk, or does this money have to be used in a specific period? We can't bank it up?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Kevin McCune, just for the record, Public Works Director. It's a competitive grant process, so every, they call them cycles. Every cycle, they ask for a call for projects. The city among, the city and the county and all, all the agencies put together the project that they feel like will be best competitive. One of the criteria is the size of the project. They try to spread the, spread the funds out around. So we, if, if I understand your question correctly, is maybe don't, don't submit it every cycle, but wait, wait, skip a cycle and try to get a bigger project? Is that what you have in mind?
Well, I just wasn't aware that it was an annual grant that you got. I thought it was kind of like, you know, we're in our tenth cycle, and we could, you know, rather than go and build a fifty-foot sidewalk somewhere, we could save the money for that next year, and then put in a, like, a different crosswalk, something...
Right.
And, you know, the school district also receives money on the same grant, don't they?
They, they are a, an applicant also, so they also submit projects, and, but like I said, it's not an, it's not a allocation solely, like, we rely on these funds. It's a competitive grant that we get sometimes, and some cycles, we get nothing, depending on how strong our applications are.
Is there even the slightest possible chance that we could team with the school district to get more money to do something, or is that kind of like a no-no in grant world?
No, no, that's fine. Actually, we, we usually get letters of support from the school district, among other local, local organizations, as well as they get letters of support from the city for their project. So we, we are always looking to team up and, and coordinate.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby, you said you wanted clarification. Is this something we could clarify without pulling it, or would you like to still have it pulled for discussion?
I've got about five questions. I don't know, I mean, it's...
We'll just pull it for discussion then. So if I can get a motion to approve the consent calendar, items number one through four.
I move that we hand one through four.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, items one through four. Can we vote, please? And that passes five-zero. Okay, we are going to now move on to... Nope, no, we're going to move on to staff presentations and comments request, anything from staff. Okay, we'll now move on. Now we'll move on to item number five. This is award project CS-08-S2C, Environmental Services.
I just had some questions for Mr. Luther I did ask you the other day. We have it written down in here that there are four qualified firms, and I was wondering, who are the other three? Because we know Rincon is one of them.
So, yeah, the four proposals were received, ones from Rincon Consultants, ones from AECom, one from Dudek, and Stand Tech Consulting.
And then I was asking and inquiring about, we're talking about it costing...
Councilmember Mosby, excuse me. Luther, just so the public can understand what we're talking about, just sort of briefly explain the project that we're talking about.
So this is a part of a project you already awarded for design back in December. It's a riverbank stabilization along Riverside Drive, where the river's eroding into the bank, and potentially threatens the utility services to Riverbend Park, the water line that runs along Riverside Drive to L-11, and Riverside Drive itself.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the environmental phase of the design.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, the, the other question was on the fiscal impacts. He said it was going to cost more than the original, and there was a, two reasons for it. He said it was significant time lapse, we've gone two-plus years, and the other was because there was an increase in detailed documentation required by FEMA. And I was saying, how did those weigh? I mean, was, which was more significant and...
Well, the most significant would be the requirements by FEMA. We didn't, before we applied for a grant, we did not have a opportunity to consult with the FEMA environmentalists. They're, they are the lead agency for the NEPA document. The city is the SEQA document. So we didn't have as detailed scope of work to estimate by, so it was mainly the scope of work for, that they were going to require.
And in, in the bid, was Rincon still, even with the increases, would they still have been recognized as the, the lowest bidder?
Yeah, so during the review process, consultant contracts work a little differently than, than bids. It's not a bid, it's a qualifications-based selection. So we ranked the four firms. Rincon was ranked number one. Then we go to cost. Rincon was also the lowest on the cost of the proposed proposal, so they were approximately eight percent lower than the second lowest firm.
Okay, and my last two final questions. On, on table two, it's your supplemental appropriations and supplemental revenue summary?
Yes.
And my questions are, we have down here, one, two, three, four spaces down, gas tax, fund. How is it that we're able to use that revenue pool?
Because this is going to help protect the road.
This is going to, the, the road?
It's going to help protect Riverside Drive and the bike path that runs there also that was built with road funds.
Okay. And then my last and final question was the park improvement impact fees. How are we able to access that?
One component of the protection that this will provide will be the services to Riverbend Park.
And that's at the water and sewer lines?
Yes. So, yeah, the water and sewer lines that service the park, but the, so the utility portion of that. So that council previously approved a, a split of fifty percent road funds, twenty-five percent water utility, and twenty-five percent park impact fees to fund the city match portion and contingencies. So the, that's the twenty-five percent park impact fee match. The other, I think the, the one more question you, you had mentioned in my office last week was, we are, so we previously applied for a FEMA grant and got awarded, but based on the new proposal received, costs went up. We are pursuing, getting the grant increased, and it looks, you know, so we, we're pursuing that, so hopefully, these cost increase here, seventy-five percent of it will be attributable to the grant, hopefully. That's our goal. And we have also, since December, applied for a CRUF grant. So, and if we receive that, then that'll actually cover the whole twenty-five percent of the match.
That concludes my questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Luther? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to oral communications.
Did you want to approve this?
Yeah, we will vote on that, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote. And that is approved five-zero. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to oral communications. Your opportunity to speak for, to speak for up to three minutes on any issue you so choose.
Pam Wall, local resident. I appreciate that Ken Austin is special. I followed him. Anyway, I want to talk to the presentation that we got on the utility and the collections. The first slide that went up there, I understood that to be six-point-six-five percent collections for two thousand and fourteen, and the majority of that was on other collections, not utilities, not the... And then there was another one that said eighteen percent for two thousand and fourteen, so I'm a little confused on that. Nevertheless, we only get sixty percent of what we collect anyway. And we have this bond hanging out there with another rate increase coming up, and so that money is not going into it. And I would hope that this time, when this is on the agenda, I hope it be on the agenda for the third year of the rate increase that's already been approved, that we get some discussion on where we stand right now, after two years of rate increases. And are we on target after a twenty-one percent increase and then an additional cumulative increase? Are we even close to meeting the target set for those first two years? People need to understand where we stand. If we're not meeting, you look around the city, everything's burnt up. People are not watering their lawns, they are not using their, their water, which determines their, their wastewater bill as well. I, I have a hard time believing we're meeting the goal. So what happens? At the end of five years, do we get another five years of rate increases? People need to know what's coming at them, and their rates are going up, and so these deposits are going to continue to go up. And what about the health department when you shut their water off? We have a lot of people struggling very hard to pay their bills, and they continue to rise. I don't think they're going to like an honest answer, because I truthfully don't think we're meeting our targets, but people need to understand where we stand. And that downgrade on the bond rating, like Mayor Lengel said, could jeopardize our power consortium as well. So we need to, we need some transparency. I would appreciate it if that would be on the agenda and be made clear. We'll be discussing the rate increase and where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
And I would like to thank the city for sponsoring the One Billion Rising. It wasn't here last time, but I do, I, I appreciate that. It was a wonderful venue to hold that, and so we'll probably be talking to you for next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Ray Leslie, Long Po. I want to talk about something that I brought up here a while back. My property is in the county, and I have a huge water tank that's up above me, it's at five hundred Willow Avenue. And I brought up some things about a water tank up above me, and a water line that runs down next to my property, and one on my property. I asked if we could get some paper and showing when the tank had been surveyed and checked to make sure it's in good condition, because there is a specific deal that you're supposed to get done every year, so many years, including a geological type thing where you've got to check the soil. That tank up there could move, the soil could get bad underneath of it. I happen to live below it. It wouldn't be a good thing if anything happened. But there is definitely a rule and a regulation where you do have to have these inspected, and I'd like to see that in writing to make sure it's been done. I talked to the mayor a little bit about it today, and I just want to reiterate and let you know that we need to do something about that. The other part of it is, you know, I've been in Long Po for quite a while now, and I bought this piece of property, and it is in the county. It's still right next to the city. I'm on the city line, and there was already water on my property, a fire hydrant that belongs to the city, and of course, the big water main that comes down through the property that feeds out of that tank, and there was an outlet there with a meter box, no meter. So when I built my house, I used a temporary meter off the hydrant, and then when we completed it, we put a meter in, and we went just on with normal water and everything else. During the time of construction, I have a booklet that I kept, like everybody usually does, and writes everything down, cost of lumber, cost of this, all the different things, and I kept a real good record of it. You know, my utilities and stuff, I have a small book that I wrote everything down in. When we were doing that, all the guys with the city were really good people to come up and run my... and run my electrical in and done all of the stuff. They had the fire department up there to look at the fire hydrant because it was a new project. And in doing this, they all agreed that I would be on city water, because everything's in my backyard. If I kept the water, the weeds away from the fire hydrant, kept everything done, which I've done for ten years. The city has just notified me lately that they're going to up my rates to county rates, which is one and a half times more. It's not a good thing when you just start to retire and you start getting a bunch of more bills. And the part that bothers me the most is that I've been paying the same thing for over ten years and pay my bills on time, do everything on time, and now they're going to switch, they're not going to, they already switched me over. I haven't been paying it because I'm not going to. I'd rather get in debt as some of these other people are doing.
If you can wrap it up, if you can wrap it up real quickly, Ray.
Pardon me?
Wrap it up, yeah.
Okay. But anyway, I've got a whole deal I'm going to submit, hopefully tomorrow, to the city and try and get some of this stuff taken care of. As I told the mayor today, I've got paperwork on it, and the guy can't remember signing it, and he can't remember anything that went on with it, but I have it in my book, and it bothers me that they went ahead and jacked my rates up. I said I wanted to go ahead and maybe drill a well. The answer back was, that'd probably be a good idea.
Or come into the city.
Huh?
Or come into the city.
Yeah, that's a possibility, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leslie. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication and move on to appointments. First, first we have appointment to the Public Safety Commission, one term ending twelve of 2016, and this is Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I would like to appoint Maria Guinaga.
Maria, okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we vote? And that's five-zero. Okay, next we have a one-term on the Utility Commission, ending twelve of sixteen, and that's Councilmember Hombdahl.
I think this is an error, because Councilmember Hombdahl appointed Jonathan Munt.
No, John retired.
Retired.
He had to leave. John contacted us and he could not reply because he's taking care of his mother.
Okay, we never received that then, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Okay.
I did, but you didn't put it in the agenda.
My apologies. I didn't send you, I didn't send everybody the, his email. He did inform Councilmember Hombdahl.
You want to go ahead and put the appointment in for the next one? Because I don't have it in mind. Did you get yours?
There's actually two. There you go. You have two.
Jose Acosta. And I, he caught a hold of me. I sat down and I met with him, and I don't see him in here, not, yeah, he's in the back. And we met and talked and discussed it, and that's my appointment.
Okay, can we have a second for Mr. Acosta? Do we have, no one wants to second Mr. Acosta? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, technically on the nomination, you don't need a second. You need a vote, but you don't need to second.
Okay, then let's vote. That passes five-zero. Congratulations, Mr. Acosta. Okay, and I believe we have one-at-large term for the Airport Commission, term ending January of 2019, and that is Steve Diedrich. And I will go ahead and nominate Mr. Diedrich. I don't know if he's here, so.
I'll second it.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote on Mr. Diedrich for the Airport Commission. And that passes five-zero. And that is it for appointments. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
Nothing.
Okay. This is oral communications again. This is your last opportunity to speak for up to two minutes on any item you so choose. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication, bring you back to the council for council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report today.
Councilmember Hombdahl.
Yeah, I've got a couple, three. I went to the kickoff of the Flower Festival and for that commission, so, and they had a good turnout and it worked out real well. Also, I went to the LCT presentation. I'll be back before midnight. Excellent play. The Eighth is the last day, so I mean, it was on for three different weeks. I made the Explorer Long Poak, and I was very pleased and happy to see the working relationship between the hotels and the restaurants, and they're all out there working very well. Also, I sat on the seniors' commission, went there, and we are short one person. Somebody interested in sitting on the senior commission, give me a contact, because they do need one real bad. I'm going to throw something out there. I don't know, you probably all read the paper, but maybe the Long Poak should get into the idea of taking the San Ridi Hills District into the city of Long Poak since they want to get out. So they've got some interesting things coming out there, but we could bring that district into the city and help them out. I thought it'd be a good idea to do that. Oh, and then one thing I did have, I met with some people who work for the oil companies, and they're bringing in three-hundred-and-fifty people to be educated in the next three weeks, so.
Mr. Hombdahl. Councilmember Mosby.
I guess one of the things is the Fire and Ice Party. I didn't hear anybody else talk about it, but they've got tickets to sell. So you go to the Chamber or to Fire Station One. The event's the 21st.
21st March, yeah.
Yeah. So they've got a bunch more to sell, so everybody get out there and get some.
Yeah. For those of you not familiar with the Fire and Ice Ball, it's a fundraiser put on by the Long Poak Firefighters Foundation. It's a fundraiser for the foundation. It's their largest fundraiser, and the foundation provides multiple, multiple items, mainly safety items, for the Long Poak Fire Department. Their most recent contribution was the life safety trailer that they put in there, so. Tickets are fifty dollars available, and it's a wonderful dinner, band, music, dancing, and March 21st, so. Thank you, Mr. Mosby. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm not going to make any reports, but I'd like to maybe poll the council. We had a special meeting last Tuesday, which, in the impression of it being a workshop, actually became more of a budget priority, what we want to do workshop. I think there's several items that are still out there. I have some that I'd like to discuss. I certainly would think there's other members on the council that would like to discuss some items. I would maybe just suggest we schedule a workshop where we could put in some additional input on, not specifically budget items, but other issues and thoughts we have.
Well, we can certainly schedule another workshop. You want to do another off Tuesday?
I'm pretty open. I'm not going to Hawaii.
I don't know how you want to handle this, if you, well, let's just look at our calendars. Is everyone in favor of another workshop? Okay, then look at your calendars. Now, remember, we want, this, the whole idea was this, of this, so we could get it done before the budget near, or, Mr. City Administrator, when are we starting these budget hearings?
I would say, we, what I'd heard from you is you wanted to meet on off Tuesdays, so either, depending on a couple of factors, end of this month or at the beginning of April that we'd start having those, or middle of April that we'd start having those sessions.
Okay. Well, the next off Tuesday that would be available would be, for me, it's the 24th, March 24th. Councilmember Vega, are you available on March 24th?
I can't be for certain right now. I have something else.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yep.
And Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm available.
Okay. We'll tentatively schedule for the 24th. You let us know as soon as possible, then.
Just so I might have some clarification on that, is there, I'm a little unclear, is there something you are expecting from me to prepare for that, or are we just going to gather and you'll guide whatever you want to discuss?
Exactly.
Okay. The latter of the two, correct?
We will anticipate nothing from you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, but we knew you needed a title, so we know what the workshop is for.
I guess we will label it again, council priorities, is that? Okay. Okay, so that is on the 24th, okay? And I just have two things. One actually ties right into Councilmember Starbuck's thing. You know, there's five people sitting up here with voices, and we all have equal voices. I'm only here to facilitate the meeting. My voice means no more than any one of your other ones. And there was a little, there was discussion after the meeting last week concerning the abruptness of the meeting ending. Please, if you have something, if you disagree with something happening, you have a button, you like and go on and bring it forward. Don't wait till after the meeting and complain or discuss that something happened. Again, if you don't like something going on, speak, speak your mind and let us know, but don't wait till after. Thank you, Mr. Starbuck, for bringing it forward, and not that you were complaining. Okay, the only, the only other item I have is I was, I did go to a meeting. Meeting was for the NCPA Northern California Power Association in Roseville, California, and that was on February 25th and 26th. The city did pay for my one-night lodging and paid for my mileage that I used my own vehicle to drive there. That was my only city money that I spent. If there's nothing else, we will be adjourned until our regular council meeting of March 17th. Yes?[1366.35]